You can register and vote during early voting. You do not have to. Not sure what's going on with my mic. I apologize. Oh, it's my phone. Got it. And the primaries on May. Oh, good Lord. Anyway, you can't register to vote on voting day. So that's my reminder for folks. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Without the voters out there, we would not be in these seats today. So we remind you of that important civic civic responsibility. Councilwoman Williams.
We received that award and it was recognized at the past conference. And this is basically honoring municipalities that in the face of financial challenges, completed a project or an initiative without the utilization of federal or state dollars. And winning initiative Innovate Durham Initiative, which was recognized. So just wanted to state that on the public record.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. And as usual, we show out when we show up. All right. Are there any further announcements? We will now turn to our priority items by our city manager, Paige.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor O'Neil, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem Middleton, and members of the Durham City Council. I do have several priority items for you, and I will walk through them at this time. Agenda item number six, JFK Towers, JFK Towers, North Carolina, TCLP Development Loan Commitment. The administration is requesting that you suspend the rules today to allow the city to provide the required letter of commitment so that the developer can close on permanent financing and secure a current interest rate. Agenda item number seven, the administration is also requesting that you suspend the rules today on this item. And it is Cedar Terrace Apartments Taft Mills Group LLC Development Loan Commitment. By suspending the rules today, at this work session, it will allow the administration to provide the developer of this project with the required letter of commitment for their final tax credit application, which has a due date of May 15, 2022. Additionally, we have item number five, which is an interlocal agreement renewal for Durham City County Strategic Youth Initiatives. We are asking for a 25-minute time slot to make a presentation along with this item. Agenda item number 12, proposed water and sewer rates for fiscal year 2022, 2023. We have a 15-minute presentation for this item. Agenda item number 20 is the fiscal year 2022, 2023, Proposed Budget and Fiscal Year 2023 Through 28 Capital Improvement Plan, our CIP. A presentation will be made on this item at the May 16, 2022 city council meeting. And finally, agenda item number 22, fiscal 2023 stormwater rates. We do have a presentation for this item. And a public hearing on this item will be conducted during the May 16, 2022 city council meeting. That is all I have this afternoon.
Thank you, City Manager Paige. You have now heard the city manager's priority items. I am ready to entertain a motion for their approval. So move.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Freeman and seconded by Mayor Pro Tem that we approve the manager's priority items. All in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed have the same right. Hearing none, the ayes have it, and the motion passes unanimously. We will now turn to our city attorney for her priority items.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Middleton, and members of the city council. It's good to see you today. I do have one priority item today. I would request that the city council hold a closed session at the conclusion of all regular business at the end of today's work session. We can hold the motion until we get to that point of the meeting. But I do ask for that closed session, please.
Thank you so much. I recognize we are now ready to entertain a motion to accept the city attorney's priority items.
So move.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Williams and seconded by Councilwoman Johnson to accept her priority items. We would now ask that we vote. All those in favor sign by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed have the same right. Hearing none, the ayes have it, and the motion passes unanimously. And then we will entertain your motion to close session at the end. All right. Okay. All right. Let us briefly now return back to the request by our city manager to suspend the rules for items. Item six, JFK Towers, JFK Towers NCTC LP Development Loan Commitment. Number seven, Cedar Trace Apartments Taft Mills Group LLC Development Loan Commitment. And I am ready to.
Madam Mayor, I move that we suspend the rules to vote on items six and seven.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Williams and seconded by Councilwoman Johnson that we suspend the rules. We are now ready to vote. All those in favor, would you sign by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed have the same right.
Aye, opposed.
Please note that we have one in opposition, and the ayes have it.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve, that we authorize the city manager to issue JFK Towers and CTC LP or its designated affiliate, approved by the city, a conditional binding commitment of permanent financing in an amount of up to $1.5 million in affordable housing bond funds for the rehabilitation of 177 affordable rental units at 4900 Old Farm Road in Durham, known as JFK Towers.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Johnson and seconded by Councilwoman Williams. At this point in time, I'd ask for all those in favor, if you would sign by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed have the same right.
Aye, opposed.
We have one in opposition, Councilwoman Freeman. The ayes have it.
Madam Attorney, do we need to vote on each motion? Okay. I move that we authorize the city manager to execute any and all documents and instruments necessary, reasonable, and appropriate in order to carry out the purpose and intent of this conditional binding commitment of permanent financing.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Williams and seconded by, I'm sorry, moved by Councilwoman Johnson and seconded by Councilwoman Williams. At this time, I'd ask for those in favor, would you sign by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed have the same right. Hearing none, the ayes have it.
I move we authorize the city manager to make necessary and sundry changes to the conditional binding commitment of permanent financing, so long as the changes do not increase the financial obligations of the city and the changes taken as a whole are not less favorable to the city.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Johnson and seconded by Councilwoman Williams. We are now ready to vote. All those in favor, would you say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed have the same right. Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously.
I move that we approve item seven to authorize the city manager to issue to Taft Mills Group LLC or its designated affiliate approved by the city, a conditional binding commitment of permanent financing in an amount up to $6.9 million in affordable housing bond funds and/or home investment partnership funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the development of 180 affordable rental units at 3400 Carr Road in Durham, known as Cedar Trace.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Johnson and seconded by Councilwoman Williams. All those in favor, would you sign by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed will have the same right.
Aye, opposed.
We have one in opposition, Councilwoman Freeman. The ayes have it.
I move we authorize the city manager to execute any and all documents and instruments necessary, reasonable, and appropriate in order to carry out the purpose and intent of this conditional binding commitment of permanent financing.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Johnson and seconded by Councilwoman Williams. All those in favor, would you sign by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed have the same right. Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously.
I move we authorize the city manager to make necessary and sundry changes to the conditional binding commitment of permanent financing and associated documents, so long as the changes do not increase the financial obligations of the city and the changes taken as a whole are not less favorable to the city.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Johnson and seconded by Councilwoman Williams. All those in favor, would you sign by saying aye?
Aye.
All those in opposition have the same right. Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously. We will now turn to our city clerk for any priority items that she may have.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, and council members. I would like to pull item number four. And I'll read that item. It's the nominate and appoint a city of Durham resident to fill one vacancy on the at-large seat of council. I'd like to pull that for discussion and to suspend the rules in order to vote.
All right. Now I would entertain a motion to accept our city clerk's priority items.
So move.
Second.
It has been moved by Mayor Pro Tem Middleton and seconded by Councilwoman Freeman. Would we all sign, all those in favor, sign by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those in opposition have the same right. Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
I am ready to entertain a motion to suspend the rules in accordance to our request by our city clerk.
Move to suspend.
Second. It has been moved by Mayor Pro Tem Middleton and seconded by Councilwoman Freeman. All those in favor, would you sign by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed will have the same right. Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously. We will first read our agenda through, and then we will come back to our pulled item by our city clerk. All right. So we are going to read our administrative consent items. Item number one, the Durham Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission appointment. Item two, the Durham Historic Preservation Commission appointment. Item three, the Mayor's Hispanic Latino Committee appointment. Item four, which has been pulled, is to nominate and appoint a city of Durham resident to fill one vacancy on the at-large seat of council. We now turn to our departmental items. Item five, the interlocal agreement renewal for Durham City County Strategic Youth Initiatives. Item six, which we have already dealt with, is JFK Towers, JFK Towers NCTC LP Development Loan Commitment. We've already also resolved, undisposed, item seven, which is Cedar Trace Apartments Taft Mills Group LLC Development Loan Commitment. Item eight, the contract with Dixie Lawn Service Incorporated for right-of-way mowing and litter removal services.
Madam Mayor, would you pull that item, please?
Yes, sir. Item nine, the Second Amendment to Contract Number 17430, Supplemental Agreement Number Two with Kim Lee Horn and Associates, the Durham County Transit Plan.
Madam Mayor, can you pull that item?
You would like that item pulled?
Yes.
Item 10, the 2022 through 2025 Transportation On Call Contract, Number 18920, Supplemental Service Agreement Number One, US 70 Access and Connectivity Service Study, I'm sorry. Item 11, the award of a service contract to Taylor Meter Technologies for the Large Meter Inspection and Testing Services Project.
Madam Mayor, would you pull number 11 for me, please?
Sure will. Item 12, the proposed water and sewer rates for FY 2022 through 2023. Item 13, contract agreement for services with Maude in Durham. Item 14, fiscal year 2022 through 23, agreement to fund economic development programs and services operated by Downtown Durham, Inc., using City of Durham funds.
Madam Mayor, I don't want to pull it, but I did want to say on the record, I'm really appreciative of the work that this organization has done. And thanks for weathering through the pandemic and looking forward to more coming.
Madam Mayor, I didn't want to pull it as well, so I was just going to hold it. But because Councilwoman Williams mentioned, I do want to say that I think that the services that are provided in our downtown area are exceptional. And I think we have to figure out a way to make sure that more of the underserved businesses in our community actually have that type of service as well. That's all.
Thank you. And we thank Ms. Nicole Thompson, who is here with us in the city chambers this afternoon. Thank you for all that you're doing. Item 15, the National League of Cities Hispanic, I can never say this word, Entrepreneurs Pilot Program Grant Award and Grant Project Ordinance.
Madam Mayor, I don't want to pull it, but I was just really happy to see this. And I want to thank OEWD for working really hard to organize around this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I didn't want to pull it, but I would hope that OEWD will work to acquire more than $15,000 to make sure that this is successful.
I concur.
Thank you so much. Item 16, contract amendment for ST-317C Utility Locate Services. Item 17, contract SW-86 Public Works Street Maintenance Repairs 2022. Item 18, Street and Infrastructure Acceptances.
Madam Mayor, can you pull that item?
That was Councilwoman Freeman?
Yeah.
Item 19, SW-89C Project Management and Inspection Services. Item 20, which is under our presentations, fiscal year 2022 through 2023, Proposed Budget and Fiscal Year 2023 through 2028 Capital Improvement Plan, CIP. A presentation will be made at the May 16, 2022 city council meeting. Public hearings, item 21, the consolidated annexation Andrew Avenue Apartments. Item 22, this FY 2023 Storm Water Rates. And there will be a hearing on, a public hearing on May 16, 2022. That will conclude our agenda. Madam Manager, here's what I have for the pulled items. Items four, item number four, item number five, item number eight, item number nine, item 11, item 18?
12.
Item 12, item 18, and item 22. Are we in agreement?
Yes, ma'am. That's all we have.
Now, I do not see any citizens matters, just to make sure. Great. All right. Now I am going to turn it over to our Mayor Pro Tem Middleton and Councilwoman Johnson, who have headed our legislative committee, to return back to the priority item from our city clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And again, good afternoon to you and to all of my honorable colleagues and to those of you in the chamber and those watching at home. We come now to deal with the matter that our clerk, and I want to thank our clerk for the work she's done in quarterbacking this selection process for us. As chair of the procedure committee, I want to thank you, Madam Mayor, for your insistence on transparency, your insistence on public participation as well, and for us to be deliberate in really this most sacred choice, perhaps second to the budget that we pass for this city. This might be one of the most significant and serious choices that we make and decisions we make as a council. It's an inferior process, and when I say inferior, secondary to an election, in that these seats are the property of the people of Durham. But every once in a while, in filling these seats, the responsibility, the sacred responsibility, falls to us, and we're called to act as surrogates in place of the almost 300,000 people of this city. That's not to be taken lightly. It's to be approached with the utmost seriousness, utmost sobriety, and utmost respect for the fact that we are acting as surrogates for the people. The best way to fill these seats is through election, but as circumstance has played, this option and this responsibility falls to us legally and morally as a council. As chair of the procedures committee, I want to thank my co-chair, Gillian Johnson, who's been wonderful in this process in making sure that we've honored standing customs and practices and traditions of the council when it comes to, when these times fall to us to fill these seats. And I want to thank her. She's been a great partner in this process. As chair, it falls to me to start the discussion. And either the honor or the burden of casting the first vote and starting the conversation belongs to me. I guess history will determine what that is, but it's an honor to start this conversation. Madam Mayor and colleagues, we are blessed in Durham. We have an embarrassment of riches when it comes to people that are civically minded, that love our city, that are possessed of our values, that are animated by the spirit that makes Durham such a special city in this country. And that has been really, really illustrated in this election process. First, with the 20-some-odd folk who initially put their names in a hat, and we want to honor them on behalf of a grateful city for their willingness to step up and serve on what sometimes is a thankless, hard job, but it is incredibly rewarding. And then the final four, who are with us in the chamber today. Each of you have profound, profound gratitude and respect, not only from this council, but from every resident of this city, every citizen of this city. This is perhaps one of the most impressive group of people I've had the honor and privilege of considering. It was humbling reading through their accomplishments, through their credentials. And I particularly was moved on Tuesday night when we had folk for each of the four candidates come and speak so passionately, so convincingly, not just about their accomplishments and their vitae, but them as people, as human beings. And I, my belief and love for this city and belief that we have the absolute best people in this country living in Durham was reaffirmed during that conversation. But lo, alas, it comes down to having, to choose one. And Madam Mayor, in my deliberation process, one of the things that guided me was, was what would deepen our debate and our considerations as a council? But I also considered what we have available to us as a council when it comes to our staff as well. Not just our experiences and expertise on this podium, but what our staff brings us as well. And they bring us a lot, a great deal of expertise, a great deal of insight. And when we ask the right questions, when we provide the appropriate runways and on-ramps, our conversation is deepened greatly by the staff. So in considering what staff brings to us, our professional staff and what we have up here, my question was, what would deepen, what perspective are we not exposed to, either through each other or through our incredible staff on a regular basis? And that's what brought me to my decision. I want to say to Dr. Price, Dr. Holman, Dr. McCoy, and to Nate Baker, we would win with either one of you. And the solace I take in having to only choose one person today is that to a person, each one of them committed that they would be interested in seeking to serve this city moving forward. I find comfort in that because either one of them sitting up here would add incredible depth and incredible reach and another aspect to this council. But after consideration, deep. consideration, deep dives, and listening to what the people have had to say, and again, looking at the makeup of this council and looking at what is available to us via staff, I will be casting a vote today for Dr. Monique Holsey Hyman to fill the at-large vacancy seat. I think that her perspective, from her work as a social worker, from what I heard from the members of the community who spoke on her behalf, would be a welcome and deepening, a deepening addition. And by deepening, I mean providing a perspective that I think oftentimes goes not covered in some of the debates we have. We've got a lot of policy wonks at our disposal as a council. We've got a lot of lawyers. We've got a lot of folk who have worked on policing and other issues, but I personally am intrigued by having our debate challenged and shaped by someone who has been in human services and particularly with her social work background. So I am be casting my vote for Dr. Hyman today to fill the at-large vacancy left by our good friend, Councilmember Charlie Reese. I think it would honor his service and commitment. I think it would set us up for success moving forward, and I look forward to the other three candidates, if my candidate should win the day today. I look forward to the other candidates continuing their engagement in our public square and deepening the life of our city. Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're going to proceed down the podium. Our Honor will go last, so I'll yield at this time to Councilmember Freeman.
I would pass. Thank you.
What do you mean pass? Are you not? Oh, Councilmember Caballero.
Good afternoon. Thank you. So I think the part that was very amazing about our process, at least for me, was Tuesday night. I think all four applicants, the supporters that they brought, the commitment and dedication that they have shown Durham, and that was very evident by all of the folks who came and spoke for them. We have a lot of talent in this city. We should be very, very proud of that talent. Every single applicant was extremely strong. Every single applicant was very genuine and thoughtful and caring. This is not an easy process. After reading applications, I thought maybe I had somebody that I was leaning towards, and then interviews, maybe somebody else, and then after Tuesday evening, I was even more flummoxed. But I will be casting my vote for Dr. Monique Holsey Hyman. I think the part that really, I think challenged me was that we definitely don't have that perspective on council, and then also very much her passion for youth and mentorship. We need it. We know that we're struggling with our youth in this city for many, many reasons, and I look forward to being a colleague to her and also to help her, because I've been in this spot. The fire hose is definitely in your face for several months. It's a very challenging position to be in when you are appointed, because you do not seek election. You have not been for three or four months running a campaign, preparing potentially. I want to thank every single applicant who applied. I know Durham has a very, very bright future, because you are here with us. I hope that you do seek higher office. We will, we have elections every year in Durham, North Carolina. There are many, many seats. So thank you again for applying. Thank you to your supporters who came and spoke on your behalf. Thanks. That's all.
Thank you, Member, thank you, Councilmember Caballero. I'll yield at this time now to Councilmember Williams.
Thank you. Yes, this is a pretty tough moment. I had to be drugged to vote on this because I did not want to. I think I was on public record just a little over a year ago, when I was in, you know, the position of trying to seek an appointment, and the first statement I said was, I wish this was just taken up in an election, you know. And up until the very last minute, you know, before today's meeting, I gave in to the pressure of our reality, and, you know, this city has a capacity of seven seats to be at the top of the food chain and running the city. And I struggled with so many things leading up to this point, simply because, one, we, I was so appreciative to have so many people willing to make such a sacrifice to serve in this, in this capacity. But down to the four, the final four, one, I did not know as well, but I was extremely impressed with what they had to provide. One, I, two, I've sought advisement myself from, and another, I've engaged with and just in the community, you know, just in general, and have been extremely impressed. And I will, I will admit, I came into this with my biases, and I, you know, I have my interests, and then I have my, you know, just time spent, and I could not come up with a decision. And I said I wanted to just not take on this pressure and lead it to an election, let it go to an election. However, pressure is a daily reality that we have to face in this capacity, and it's something you can't run from. And you don't always make the right decision, but you make your best decision, and that is how you sleep at night. And while I, while I was clinging on to my biases, you know, the folks that I was like, you know, this, this person's extremely smart, but so are the rest as well. All of the things that I was factoring, I thought about taking, I had to take myself out of it. I had to take myself, what I would prefer, out of it, and I had to think about what, you know, what are we missing? I think, just listening, some others did the same process. What are we missing? You know, what do we have, you know, as a city government? You know, what do we have as a council in regards to expertise? But most of all, what does the community need in this moment in time? And while it can sometimes be a burden that we have an election every single year, it's also a good thing we have an election every single year, because we can always have the opportunity to refresh. So while each of the candidates, I have a great deal of respect for you, and even just being honest, going against what my, my personal bias would be, I am going to go with who I think can address the need of our community right now, and that's building a whole person. That is building a whole person, from the interviews to the applications to the speakers, and just reflecting on all of that. I too am going to go with Dr. Monique Holsey Hyman. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. At this time, I'll yield to Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I want to echo my colleagues' appreciation for everyone who has taken part in this process, especially the applicants. We were really blessed to have a fabulous group of people applying for this role, and especially the four finalists. We absolutely could not go wrong with any of the four of you. This is the third time I've done this appointment process, and it's never easy. There's always a lot of really, a lot of really fabulous candidates who are, who are excited about, about serving our city, and we are so fortunate to have, to have so many civically minded and politically engaged people in our community who are excited about, about serving our residents. I'm also going to be casting my vote for Dr. Monique Holsey Hyman for a couple of reasons. I am really excited about her expertise in social work, which is something that we, you know, that we, that we don't have right now amongst, amongst our body, and is something that I think is really important to bring to the table now that we are, especially in our consideration of different ways to provide community safety. We are relying a lot on people in the human services field, social workers and, and other mental health workers to, to really change, make some, some big changes in our, in our safety systems, and I think having that expertise on the council will be, will be really valuable for us. I also just want to mention, I was really touched by the first speaker for Dr. Holsey Hyman at our, at our Tuesday, at our Tuesday public comment. The, the way that she, the way that she described her, her leadership and mentorship was just really, really inspiring and touching for me, and my mom was a social worker, so I also have just a lot of respect for, for the profession and think that it's, it'll be a great skill set to add, to add to our body. Again, I want to appreciate everybody who applied. You all have amazing skill sets and knowledge and a real heart for our city, and I hope that you'll all continue to stay involved in, in the work for the city that you're doing now or in other, in other projects in the future, and look forward to, to continuing to work with, with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. Madam Clerk, before I yield to Her Honor the Mayor, who will have the last word, Councilmember Freeman has indicated that she's already made her vote known to you. Would you report that for the record, please?
Absolutely. Councilmember Freeman has voted in favor of Dr. Monique Holsey Hyman.
Thank you. Her Honor the Mayor.
Good afternoon, Bull City, in Durham, North Carolina, and to our candidates who applied for this process. As you know, for Councilman Williams and I, this was our first time being a part of this process. And first of all, I'd like to thank our leaders who have guided us through this process, Mayor Pro Tem Middleton and Councilwoman Johnson, who have worked really hard in front, in the public eye as well as behind the public eye, to make sure that this process has gone well. I'd also note that our city clerks and all of our staff, our county manager and our county attorney, you know, they make sure that these processes go well. For me, as, as your newly elected mayor, in my consideration of how I would go about casting a vote, it was really important for me, one, as a person, to make sure that I was being true to what I had promised the citizens of Durham as a mayor, also to consider our council, and how we could build a more cohesive group, knowing that democracy does require differences. But there are some things and some places where I believe that it is important that we have agreement. And then the third is to the accountability to the people who elected all of us, and how we stand in the place of them for this particular juncture. So for me personally, you've heard me say it over and over again, from the very beginning of my quest for this, boots on the ground, leave no one behind, and there has to be a place where folk who have traditionally been left out are included. For me as the council, the things that have been important to all of us, primarily violence and community safety. We all want a safe Durham. We all want to address violence, and we all want to figure out how we can get into the space to, to really get some expertise in that area. And thirdly, to the citizens at large, which is pretty much what they've all told all of us, how do we begin to address some of the deep-seated issues that have plagued our city in terms of some of our most marginalized communities? And so I too will be casting my vote for Dr. Monique Holsey Hyman, because I think she can provide for us a mechanism for boots on the ground. She can provide leadership that will help us leave no one behind. We have an ability to, as my Mayor Pro Tem has said, to kind of learn some of the other things, and, and we appreciate all of the knowledge. But on this one, this particular, at this particular time, for such a time as this, I think that we do need a person who can provide the deep dive into humans and their behavior and how to address it. So I thank you all for applying. We look forward to her joining us up here on this dais, and I hope that you all will continue to be civic-minded and continue to be engaged. So thank you all, and congratulations to you, Dr. Holsey Hyman. You have received a unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple more responsibilities to discharge as Chair of the Procedure Committee. By my assessment, Dr. Monique Holsey Hyman has received the unanimous vote of the council and is now Councilmember Designee, Dr. Monique Holsey Hyman. Just a word about, Madam Clerk, how we will proceed in onboarding Dr. Hyman. We will leave it to you to work with her and her family to identify a time between now and next week for her official swearing-in. We want to give her opportunity to have any folk that she may want to have, in addition to, I see her husband is in, hello, husband in the chamber, in addition to any folk she may want to have there for a swearing-in opportunity to also do some light onboarding before she crosses the legal threshold of being sworn in and having to sit up here. So she has our profound congratulations and our profound thanks and congratulations to all of the candidates as well. We are a better city because of each of you, and I look forward to your continued engagement in the public square. Councilmember Designee Hyman, congratulations, ma'am. We look forward to welcoming you. It's going to be a very short honeymoon period, because there's a lot going on in our city, and these are challenging times, but we're confident that with your skill and your passion, we will be a better council and a better city. You have our profoundest congratulations and our support of each and every person on this dais. Congratulations to you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll turn the gavel back over to you now, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for a fine job. Thank you to you both and to you all for your participation in this process. And now we will return to our pooled items, and we will begin with item number five, which is the inter-local agreement renewal for Durham City-County Strategic Youth Initiatives. And we will receive a presentation. Our resource person is Ms. Laura Khalil.
Yes, hi. Good afternoon, Mayor O'Neill, Mayor Pro Tem Middleton, and council members, and everyone dialed in. It is great to be here with you, and thank you for the space and time to hear our presentation. I'm Laura Khalil, pronoun she/her. I'm the City-County Youth Initiatives Manager, and I'm joined by another member of my team today. Who can introduce herself?
Hey, everyone. Glad to be here. My name is Elise Fraser. My pronouns are she/her and hers, and I am the Youth Engagement Manager for the City of Durham's Office and Room.
Okay, great. Let me see if I can figure out this technology. All right, I think the slides are showing. So as you read in the meeting materials, we're here to talk about the City-County Interlocal Agreement, or ILA, for youth initiatives, which is expiring at the end of June. We are here to make recommendations for a renewal of the ILA and also seeking your approval for it as well. And also want to share that this past Monday, we presented to the Board of County Commissioners. They were supportive of the proposed ILA, and they requested one small revision, which I will share later in the presentation. All right, let's see. Great. So this is how we plan to spend our time together. We'll start with a very brief refresh of the ILA backgrounds and share some highlights of our accomplishments over the last four years. We're going to try to squeeze that in to ten minutes or less, and we have been giving updates throughout the years pretty regularly, so this is a high-level view of the arc of our progress rather than specific project updates. And then we'll share recommendations for the ILA renewal and have time for discussion. All right, let's get started. Okay, so we've used this slide and the next one in past presentations. Just wanted to do a quick refresh. The ILA, the Youth Initiatives ILA began in 2017, when the city and county made a commitment to fund an initiative that could build on Durham's past efforts to support youth success. So there have been a lot of work done, and this is a So there have been a lot of work done, and this is a continuation and a legacy of work to support young people. Both agencies entered into an ILA, and that established a city-county position that would lead the new initiative, and that is the position that I've had the honor of serving in for a little over four years. And that position is based on the Office on Youth and the City Manager's Office, where complementary programming was already happening at the time. And over time, kind of the key takeaway here is that there were a lot of goals of the initiative. And over time, we worked to fully integrate them as goals of the Office on Youth so that our efforts were in sync. So the initiative became a way to advance Office on Youth goals and vice versa. Oops. Okay, so this is an old visual we've used for a few years to show how the Office on Youth goals connect to the initiative. You can see the challenges that have been identified on the left. And then the manager's responsibilities intended to address those challenges, and then how all of those things come together to form the Office on Youth goals, which we'll be touching on a little bit later in the presentation. So what did we build in four years? We're excited to share with you our top five. Before we dive in, I did want to do a little context setting for what we're about to share. Our work focuses on long-term strategy. We have plenty of short-term impacts, that's for sure, as you'll see. And we're also building new pathways for those most affected by our community's pressing problems to have power in shaping solutions to those problems. You might have heard of the saying, "Nothing for us without us", and that is a guiding principle for us. And so what we're building in the office are ways or mechanisms for doing this that are scalable. And we like to think applicable beyond just youth initiatives, right? Beyond just young people. And we, we believe that they have the potential to be really transformative for our agencies. So I'd ask that you hold that context as we share today. So what did we build? There was a drum roll. Can I get it now? I get to kick us off with number one. This is a foundation and a blueprint for the work. So being clear about our vision and how we will get there and how we will stay true to our values has been an anchoring practice for our office. We began our strategic planning process immediately with hundreds of meetings with lots of different types of stakeholders, and it's been an iterative process ever since. It has helped us focus, which has also helped us maximize our resources and our impact. Our process incorporated equitable community engagement that allowed us to hear from hundreds of young people and their families and service providers. This is our Youth Listening Project, which you're familiar with. And they told us exactly where to focus. They gave us a very specific roadmap for how we can make Durham a better place for young people. And I just did want to highlight that that blueprint reflects the needs and dreams of Black and Brown youth, LGBTQ youth, immigrant migrant youth, youth who are not working and not in school, and youth who have experienced economic hardships, houselessness, and interactions with law enforcement. And our work continues to center these and other often excluded identities. So we're happy to say that the Youth Listening Project Report has been catalyzing a lot of really exciting things ever since. It's helped us direct government dollars, thousands of government dollars, to initiatives that are actually responsive to what young people said was needed. It's informed our work and has also been uplifted and informing the work of many of our partners locally and beyond. And so the last thing I'll say on this slide is none of this would be possible without our relationships. I'll say that again. None of this would be possible without our relationships and our partnerships and the trust that we have built and that we hope to continue building, that these are part of our foundation as well. So it seems only right to just share what all of this has yielded before we jump into our other highlights, just quickly to uplift our values and our vision and mission. This is what we're about. We believe that young people's voices are important and that they deserve to be part of the decisions that affect them and their communities, that they are key stakeholders and leaders in our community right now, and that we have to work intentionally to achieve equity so that all young people in Durham have what they need to thrive and to feel seen. So our work is really about creating spaces and structures for this to happen and doing it in partnership with young people and their families and other people who work with youth. So the two key strategies we use are youth engagement and collective action with stakeholders. This is, this, we believe these two strategies will get us to the outcomes that we want to see in Durham, ultimately leading to happy, safe, well, young people who are celebrated and affirmed in every direction of, dimension, direction of their lives. So I'll stop there, and I'll turn it over to Elise.
Yeah, thank you, Laura. Thanks. So one of the second kind of areas that we really built out in the last four years has been equitable youth engagement. Laura mentioned that a key strategy for how we do this is really about creating opportunities for young people to be leaders and decision makers within local government. So we do this work in two ways, and we've talked about it before, but we work with service providers, so adults, in creating the spaces that are needed for equitable youth engagement to happen, right? We know that youth power does not happen inherently. It does not exist inherently. So those spaces have to be built. And then on the flip side is that, is that we work with young people to build up their skills, to connect them to opportunities, and all the play, all the things that they need in order to thrive in these new decision and leadership roles. So a brief example of that would be our work with the Comprehensive Plans, Plan, Policy Working Groups. So first, we connected with the planning department staff to allocate youth seats on the policy working groups. From there, we met with the adults and the young people who were recruited for the policy working groups to do a training and like, what does youth-adult partnership look like? And how do you build successful youth-adult partnership? And then after those trainings and the work began, we didn't just leave the young people. We supported them throughout the process in their tenure on the policy working groups. We met with them regularly to help, like, how do we continue to strategize so that you can be most effective in this space? So that's some examples of how we do our work. I have a couple of quotes that I want to share from some young people who were on the policy working groups. One young person says, "Through this experience, I have learned how to communicate my opinions and thoughts in a group full of adults. This is the first time I've ever been in a space where my voice and opinions hold the same weight as those of my adult peers." Another young person says, "I was able to have a voice, and I finally felt important." I'll repeat that. "I finally felt important. Everyone was respectful and understanding." So that's kind of examples of how we do our work. And so I want to talk a little bit about what success therefore looks like for us. So really, it's a heightened awareness that young people are key constituents within Durham. And then it's also about more departments and organizations seeking us out for support and creating youth engagement and youth leadership because they really value and see the value of youth voice. And then this last piece of success is really about like, high-impact projects, like the Comprehensive Plan, which I mentioned, and participatory budgeting, for example, creating new roles for young people to be decision makers. I want to say that this can be like, kind of hard to measure quantitatively, right? But we do have a couple of measures that you'll see on this slide. So one is that we are tracking the number of new decision-making opportunities created for and fielded by young people. You can see on this slide that we're now have over 50, oh, excuse me. Now we have over 75. My dyslexia just popped out a little bit. I was about to say 57. But we now have over 75. And our number is growing now that we have our youth ambassadors onboard. I do also want to emphasize that this number looks different than our kind of like broader youth engagement where we have engaged over thousands of young people. We hope this 75 or this 76 that we currently have will surpass 100 by next year. The, the last measure I kind of want to mention that we use is we track the number of systems and structure changes that have allowed for like youth leadership and decision-making to happen. So these are changes like new seats, new youth seats on boards and committees, but also new and revised operating procedures. So to date, we have over 25, like our work has led to over 25 new systems and structure changes. So this is 25 new ways of doing things within the organization. Next slide, please. I'm actually, for time, the sake of time, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this slide. I'll just say that this is kind of an illustration highlighting our wins and the ways in which we. Okay. So the kind of third area that we've really been focusing on is how do we build provider networks for better alignment? When Laura was speaking a moment ago, she talked about like two of the key strategies being, one, youth engagement, but then also the other being collective action with stakeholders. So we often talk about better alignment in connection to service providers as a way to enhance our overall goal of enhancing youth services in Durham. So this looks like finding areas of natural alignment among providers, and then also convening and skill building around those areas. So to date, we have done this work with over 100 organizations. Currently, our most effective mechanism for facilitating alignment is through our Durham Youth Leadership Fund. We talked about the fund, I believe we came and talked about it in August. So I won't talk a lot about it, but just kind of like an overview. I'll say through the fund, we are supporting 13 community organizations to advance the projects of, to advance the priorities of our Youth Listening Project. And we are really operating as a cohort with the Durham Youth Leadership Fund grantees. So we meet regularly, we do some skill building with them, but we also incentivize them building and collaborating outside of us. Laura mentioned that our processes are very scalable. And so we believe that this community grant mechanism is not only scalable, but it can be used for larger investments to bring about alignment amongst other youth priorities. And then next slide, please. Thank you. So the fourth area is really about communication and connection to resources. So for us, communication and connection is not simply just about awareness, right? So we really think about it as like, how do we make youth services better fit the needs of young people and also more relevant to the needs of young people in Durham? We had to start with a deep understanding of what those needs and barriers were. And as Laura mentioned, we got this through the Youth Listening Project. I'm not going to talk about the Youth Listening Project a lot today because we've talked about it previously. But what I will say is that one thing that we heard from young people is not simply that they do not know about resources, but sometimes the communication of those offerings are a barrier in and of itself. And we recognize that service providers don't always have the time or the marketing skills necessary to really do this effectively. So we see in our office that we have a role to play in addressing these challenges. So you'll see that we are requesting a new information and communications position, and this person will really dedicate the time needed to really work through creating solutions and expanding our impact here. I'm not going to talk a lot about the rest of this slide, but I will mention that we have our Yodrum text line, which is a way for us to send resources directly to young people in the community. So as opposed to young people having to seek out resources, we send the one-way text messages. We also have our Instagram page, and we have our Yodrum listener, which has over 300 service providers to date. And let's see. Yeah, I think that's all that I want to share about this. Can we go to the next slide, please? And finally, I just kind of want to talk about our own internal capacity and infrastructure building. We have been focusing on building our own capacity as an office to really not only do our work, but also support other departments and organizations in building their youth leadership. So you'll see that we've done this in a lot of ways. But one thing I want to highlight is because of some additional funding and support from the city, we were able to hold leasing space at the W.G. Pearson Center. This has been vital to our work because the center is really a hub for youth-serving organizations and is really broadening our partnerships and our networks and access to organizations outside of the city and county. And then the other piece, this additional support, was able to allow us to have our youth ambassador program. I'll say that we've done a lot with a relatively small budget. There are five members on our team. Two of them are full-time, and then we have three part-time members. And you'll see from this slide, we've really been holding at two FTEs for four of the last four and a half years of this initiative. And so we really hope to like, to continue to grow as an office and continue to do the amazing work that we've been able to do with such a small team. The last thing that I'll note here is that our budget did jump substantially this last fiscal year. And that was because of two things. One, we got a one-time funding from the county for the Durham Youth Leadership Fund that I mentioned earlier. The city also awarded us some carryover funds to put to the fund as well. And then we received an award for $15,000 from United Way as a part of our partnership with Protecting Our Dignity Coalition. So for the sake of time, I'm going to pass it on to Laura to continue about what we are, where we are going from here. But if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them later.
Thank you, Elise. All right. So where do we want to go from here? All right. First, we want to share our vision for the coming years with you. We want to see young people as key stakeholders in the issues that we all face in the community, and we want to see this normalized. We want to see their full partnership in our youth violence prevention efforts, transportation, the way we determine budget priorities, among other things. We know the Community Gaying Assessment, for example, was just released. And we want to see young people as equal partners in the action planning that follows up, or follows up that release of that report. We want to see more coordination and alignment among those who support and work with young people. We want to see them be more responsive to what young people need and want, especially those who have been most excluded. And we want to see young people celebrated for their brilliance and contributions that they're making as of today. So to that end, we're proposing that the renewed ILA encompassed an initiative with these three goals. Currently, it is focused on a position. So it would expand into a goal-focused ILA. There are a few strategies that are explicitly mentioned in the ILA, but in general, we want to keep it broad and evergreen enough so that it can be responsive to whatever's emerging as community priorities. For goal one, we will continue our consultation that Elise talked about for building youth leadership, hosting our ambassador program. And we are, we are requesting funds from the county to actually expand that ambassador program by five, to make it 15. First started for goal number two, we're looking at ongoing youth engagement, ongoing data collection so we can stay relevant, so we can continue to iterate, continue to be responsive to what people in the community are telling us that they need and want, and more intensive. more intensive support for a smaller cohort of providers. So this would be around two of the community warrants that Elise mentioned that were also part of our county budget request for the upcoming fiscal year. And last but not least, this goal that we're super excited about is a lot, there's a lot of youth-led work happening in Durham. Supporting that work, shining a light on it, is actually part of an overall strategy towards hearing from more people, seeing them as leaders, following their lead, and just being in general reminded of how brilliant they are. Just a couple of highlights of the renewed ILA. We did want to note that we are recommending a narrower age range focus. The age range currently specified in the ILA is five to twenty-four, which I don't think I need to tell anyone is a huge range. There are lots of different needs in that range. It's not really possible for us to effectively address all of them. So we're proposing this narrower range of thirteen to twenty-four years. This is where, when we look at our three goals, where they intersect, right? In this age range, it allows us to have more focus, economies of scale. And we also know, as we've even heard earlier in this meeting, there are a lot of pressing priorities, maybe right now, such as jobs and violence prevention, which impacts this age range. And there's been a lot of investments over the last four years to address the needs of younger children. So it's not exclusive, but it's more of a focus, and we'll continue to collaborate with our partners who work with the younger age group so that we can coordinate across the age spectrum. And I mentioned that at Monday's meeting, the commissioners had asked for a slight amendment to the ILA, I'll note that here, which is just they wanted explicit language about regular reporting of updates to both of the boards. So we'll add a statement to the youth initiatives manager responsibilities for at least annual reports to both the city council and Board of County Commissioners. All right. So this last slide is really just a picture. I'm not going to talk through every element of it, of the city and county investments and the fiscal year twenty-three budget requests related to the overall youth initiatives work. The takeaway here is that since the initiative is based in the Office on Youth and the work of the Office and the ILA are aligned, we look at the total Office on Youth budget when we talk about total investments in strategic youth initiatives. So in other words, the ILA is, budget is just part of the overall youth initiatives budget. You can see the ILA part highlighted in blue. And so if, for example, all the new city and county requests are funded, the ILA will compose about fifty percent, fifty-six percent, I think, of the total Office on Youth budget. So yeah, for the renewal, we're proposing ILA commitments that aren't split exactly in half as they are now, but move the overall investments from the city and county equals for disparity. And I think with that, I'll stop and we can have a conversation and take questions.
Wow, wow, wow. Can I tell you, I'm up here, I have been up here dancing in my seat. I am so, I mean, literally dancing in my seat. That, that made my day, right, right there. I'm going to open up to my colleagues. Thank you for a fantastic job. Well done, one done. You have my, my brain spinning. Just, wow, 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 wow. So I'll open up to my colleagues for any questions or comments they may have before I'll, I'll finish with a few. Councilwoman Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Laura and Elise, for the presentation and for all of the work that y'all have been doing over the last few years. It's really great to get this update and to learn a little bit more about all of the exciting changes and plans that y'all have for the office. I was wondering if you could talk a little bit more about how the transition is going to the, to the Change by Youth Ambassador Program? And just a little bit more about the work that the, that the youth are doing in that program and how it might, how, how you feel it's more impactful than the Durham Youth Commission? And are, like, are y'all satisfied with, with the new program and how everything is going?
Yeah, I can start us off there, and then if Laura has anything to add. So I'll say, I'll start by like, kind of setting some frame for the DYC or the Durham Youth, oh, Durham Youth Commission. So at, towards the end of the DYC, we had about, or when I came, when I was hired, we had thirty DYC members. While we had some kind of racial diversity amongst the DYC, we really had mostly young people who were really high achieving in school. And the DYC really focused on service learning, so they went out and did community service projects and volunteerism, right? So they would go to some of the food shelters and pass out food on the weekends. They did an annual event around toys, like a toy drive to trade in like, kind of violent toys, like guns for like, non-violent toys. And then they were a part of a youth, state youth council network. So really, the scope of the DYC was mostly around volunteerism and service learning. So though we had thirty young people, I would say that the impact of the DYC was really on the, the young people who were mostly engaged, and we had a lot of turnover throughout the year, and we would have about maybe fifteen young people who were really engaged throughout the year, right? When you're doing service learning and volunteerism, you want to have a lot of numbers so that you can pull, right? You can pull a lot of people into different opportunities. But since we shifted our scope to youth leadership and decision-making, it made sense that we shifted the scope of the DYC as well, right? So right now, with our Change by Youth Ambassador Program, we have eleven youth. We were budgeted for ten, but we have some extra funds in the office, so we were able to hire an extra young person. These young people are not working on volunteer opportunities, they are consultants, youth consultants to the city of Durham. And so of our eleven young people, they have worked on a total of eighteen projects so far this year. That includes Comprehensive Plan, that includes the county's Kid Vote Durham. We have some young people on the DPS Foundation's Mental Health Initiative. When we did a youth count for young people experiencing houselessness in Durham, we had young people there as well. And I'm just, oh, and then the DPR, Storm Parks and Rec New Aquatics Commu- Community Advisory Board, we have young people in there as well. So we've, our young people with the ambassador program are really consultants and have decision-making authority in the roles that they have, where the DYC was mostly just volunteering, right? And so to answer your question, Councilmember, I would say that I am very excited, not just about what the ambassador program has been able to do, right? Because this is quality, the quality of their work is really what we've highlighted as our values in our office. And we are hoping to expand to another five young people to have fifteen seats. We see this as something that could be scalable, right? But this is our pilot year, we really wanted to take our time with it. And I wish, yeah, I'll stop there. Did I answer your question? And Laura, do you have anything to that?
Yes, that was great. Thanks, Elise.
I will add, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I will add that in, as a parallel and kind of connected effort also, we have started looking at the various boards and commissions between the city and the county to look at the youth seats that exist on those boards and commissions and which ones could have youth seats and starting a process of assessing sort of areas where we can bring a robot, a more robust youth adult lens to boards where it makes sense. We've been working with the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, for example, or B-PAC, in their expansion of youth seats, promoting for those seats. We're also doing training for that commission around youth adult partnership, I think, in a couple of weeks here, and we'll also be supporting the young people who fill those seats. And we've been doing some similar work with the Racial Equity Commission as well, doing some targeted recruitment, because I know those seats were kind of hard to fill, and we're in the process of that right now. So we're, that, we see that as kind of part of this overall purpose and focus on youth leadership, youth adult partnership in areas where decisions are being made, policies, programs, recommendations to council, and commissioners, et cetera.
Thank you. We had the, a youth representative appointment for B-PAC on our agenda today and had three great applicants, so thank you for, for doing that work.
Mayor Proton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, our great folk from the Office of Youth. You know, not really a question, but just commendations and celebration. I've always, I've always been amazed how societies and culture have been able to identify and foster prodigies and genius when, from classical pianist to gymnast, when they're very, very, very young. So I'm very excited, I, I'd love to see that type of energy when it comes to government and leadership as well, to creating those environments where we, we foster this type of engagement with our young people when they're very, very young, as young as possible, as we do in other areas. And I, and I think this, this goes right to the heart of it. I'm so excited about the work product coming out of this office and this initiative. Councilmember Johnson, I like the way you always manage to get into a cool picture with these kids as well. You, you're always, it's like, where's Waldo? Right in the middle of them. So, so kudos to, to the work they're doing. I hope that all of the recommendations and requests will make it into the managers' ask for the budget this year. I look forward to supporting them. Congratulations on great work. We look forward to celebrating and continuing to support what really is and should be of the future of our city, nay, the right now of our city. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Freeman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also just want to echo my colleagues' support and just acknowledge that there's been a huge transformation that has occurred in the Office on Youth, and I want to thank Madam Mayor, Madam Manager Paige for really taking hold of that and supporting the way that you're actually rotating, not just in your own office, but also in, in collaboration with the county and the work that they're doing. And so I want to say that I'm excited, and so I appreciate Mayor Proton Middleton mentioning, you know, how far back can we go? Because you know, I like to work with the babies as, as early as, as possible. And I, I know that this, this work is just getting started, and so the visits that we had from the third graders recently is just one piece. And so what that looks like for third, fourth, and fifth graders, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, I, I really want to hear more about that. And I also would love to know how you're engaging with the workforce and economic development to make sure that these fifteen hundred slots are actually getting filled. And so I know on this agenda, we have made in Durham, you know, pushing out, trying to get some work product together to make sure that their business is aligned and there are opportunities for these youth. But I really, really want to see a lot more collaboration across our city departments and our county. And I would not limit it to that. I would also say that we need to go on the road and show other cities how to do it. So I appreciate, I appreciate any opportunity to, to talk about what you're doing, and I thank you for the report. I'm sorry, I'm looking down at the Zoom. Just looking out for you.
Thank you to my colleagues. I want to make sure that everybody has had their say before I take a brief moment to, to say some things.
Kudos, kudos, great job.
Well, I, like I indicated earlier, I've, I've literally been up here dancing in my seat. It's always amazing to me that, to see the, to actually see and hear and feel the good work that the city of Durham is doing in this arena and, and how mu- how far we are. And so I thank you all for, for doing great work and purposeful work. I am, I am a believer in mentors. As, as a mayor, I am, I am still being mentored and, and hope to mentor more. So I understand the need for us to prepare our young people as soon as possible for these roles. So I have been talking with the city manager up here, we've been going back and forth a little bit about some of the things that the city council is going to be doing, and we hope to engage you all in this process and our young, through you all, our young people. City Council hopefully will be taking a deep dive in the area of housing. So this is a prime opportunity for us to engage our young people in that necessary conversation as we attempt to learn what housing in Durham really looks like. Also, in the area of transportation, there are a lot of moving parts to that, and I will encourage a deeper conversation. I'd love to be able to do that with you all about how we can engage our young people in that. And the one thing that I do want to, that I've noticed, just across the spectrum in, in Durham, that there is a, a lack of knowledge sometimes about how the governments work here in Durham, Durham City, Durham County, you know, the, the court system. I am very interested in trying to produce some type of video that we can showcase our young people telling their, their colleagues exactly what we do and how this is made up. And I know, I'm looking at my fellow council folk, and I know that they will all be willing to engage, just so that we can begin to teach you all at an early age what this process looks like and how to get ready to prepare the next generation of leaders. So thank you all for a fantastic job. You've made my day today. You've made my day today.
Thank you so much for this opportunity.
We will now turn to our next pulled item, which will be item eight. And item eight is the contract with Dixie Lawn Service for right-of-way moving and litter removal services. I believe that that item was pulled by Mayor Proton, and our research person is Mr. Alexander Johnson.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor O'Neill, Mayor Proton Middleton, and members of council. I'm available for questions. I don't have a comprehensive presentation to show you. I just wanted to indicate what this contract is for and, and answer any questions that we have.
Thank you, thank you so much. Good to see you, and I appreciate you being with us. Is there a representative from Dixie Lawn Service here?
He has, we do have the president of the, of the company. And he has.
Mr. James McHenry?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for being with us today. Just a, a couple of questions about Dixie Lawn Service. I, I, I know the company's been, been engaged with us since nineteen ninety-nine, and I know there's a tendency in government sometimes to just kind of do things by inertia, and when a relationship's been established. But I, I did have some questions about the demographics of, of your workforce. Is, Mr. President, can you hear me? Are you on?
Madam Clerk.
Madam Clerk.
McHenry. Name is James McHenry.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
James McHenry will be the president of that company. I believe he's on virtually. He, he did sign up, brother.
Mr. McHenry is not in the queue, Madam Mayor.
I believe his telephone number is indicated with a seven, zero, four prefix. He may be on mute. Mr., Mr. McHenry, we can see your telephone. Number. But we probably need for you to unmute it if you can. You may try star six. You may try star six to unmute yourself, sir.
Madam Mayor, the telephone number is no longer in the queue.
Madam Mayor, in the interest of time, while we try and get him back, if you'd like to move on to the next pull, I'd be more than happy to wait.
All right, we'll see if he'll come back.
Yes, ma'am.
Online, and we will turn to item number nine, which was the Second Amendment to Contract Number 17430, supplemental agreement number two with Kim Lee Horn and Associates Durham County Transit Plan. Our research person is Ms. Mario Klein. I believe this item was pulled by Councilwoman Freeman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just had a couple of questions. Just reading through, I acknowledge the, the three areas or factors that are extenuating the 257,000 for essentially more engagement with the community, I'm assuming. But I just wanted to get some more information about the partner agencies and the plan around the, I guess, what the plan looked like around that type of engagement. And specifically, I'll say, I wanted to know if you were recovering responses around the bus service and if this engagement will include committees, like our public-facing Mayor's Committee, with people with, with different disabilities, or even the mayor. Go ahead.
Yeah, sorry. Aaron Kane with the DCHC MPO. Yes, we will be using a process similar to what we used in the first two rounds of engagement on the Durham Transit Plan. It will be multifaceted. We will be meeting with a variety of stakeholder groups, including NCCU, Duke, the Mayor's Committee on People with Disabilities, and a variety of other groups. We met with about two dozen of those kinds of stakeholder groups last time, and we plan to reach out to them again in this phase. In addition to that, we will be continuing our Engagement Ambassadors Program, working with ideal Ortiz to reach back out to those folks to make sure that we hear from previously underrepresented groups and make sure that they have a chance to weigh in on the preferred scenario and make adjustments based on the comments we hear from that, as well as doing what we call pop-up events, going to areas of high ridership, such as the Village and Durham Station, and engaging people one-on-one to get comments through that program.
Thank you. It would probably be really helpful if just a statement that you're going to use the city's current equitable engagement process or procedure was included in the memo. That way, I already know. That would be the best, the best thing. And then just acknowledging that $257,000. I'm hoping that there's a lot of in-person meetings and not just virtual. That's all.
Yeah, yeah, we will, we will meet in person whenever possible and whenever the folks we are meeting with are comfortable with that. Absolutely.
Thank you. That's all.
Okay.
Thank you both. Are there any other questions for, for this item? If not, I think we're still attempting to, I think the president of Dixie is going to try to rejoin us, so we'll move to our next pulled item and return once he's joined. Our next pull item would be item 11, the award of a service contract to Taylor Meter Technologies for the large meter inspection and testing service project. Our resource person is Jerry Monroe, and we also have a person from Taylor Meter Technologies, Mr. Corey Taylor, on the line. This item was pulled by Council, Mayor Protim Middleton.
Good afternoon, Mayor O'Neill, Mayor Protim Middleton, and members of council. Don Greeley, Water Management, here to answer any questions that you have concerning this item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good afternoon, Don. Good to see you. Hope you're well. Just, just very quickly, the large meters, are, are these all commercial users of, of these meters?
Yes, yes, they are. The, the largest meters, they serve Duke University, Duke Medical throughout the, the county, you know, NCCU, the, the large industries out at RTP and out of Trayburn. So they're, they're, they're all commercial meters.
The, the process, and I, I remember maybe a year, two years ago, we were having issues with, with connectivity between some of our drivers driving around and using, you know, signals to check meters on private homes. Is it the same process checking these meters? Is it done remotely with a, a sensor? Or do you have to actually get out and, and, and read these?
No, we, we have radio read meters on these meters to, to read them monthly.
Okay, so it, it's, it's, it's the, it's the same, at least in, maybe not in scale, but in, in process, it's the same as when we're reading meters at private residences as well?
Correct. And, and this is to, this contract in, in front of you is concerning to make sure that the meters are reading accurately, so the meters will be tested to make sure they're accurately registering the water that's going through them.
Was, is, is the frequency of issues with the meters, I don't, I don't know if failing's the right word, but I remember that we had a number of people that had problems with water bills because of issues with either trees blocking the sensor or whatever batteries. Is the frequency with the commercial ones similar to the, the frequency of issues with commercial ones similar to ones in private residences? And is this what this contract is seeking to, to mitigate?
No, we've actually had very much success with our larger meters when it comes to the radio read meters. They very rarely, we find any problems with being able to read them or with the batteries or with the meter. What this is about is the larger meters over time can lose their accuracy, and usually when meters lose their accuracy, they tend to under-read the volume of water that's going through the meter. So this is to ensure that the meters aren't losing that accuracy and, and to recalibrate the meter if, if need be.
Got you. All right. Thank you. That, that's all I had. Very helpful. I appreciate you. Good to see you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Freeman.
Just one question. I just wanted to know if there was a specific tier for the commercial meters around the 1 million and up, I guess, Mark? I just wasn't sure.
No, all, all of our commercial accounts are billed at tier three.
All of them? So regardless of however much water they use, it's just tier three?
Correct.
And is there any conversation or looking into like, I guess, research into how that's having impact for some of the, some of those that aren't using a million?
That's evaluated annually when we, when we have the rate presentation. I can elaborate a, a little bit more on that, but every year we look at whether or not those, you know, how that should be adjusted and how much income revenue those meters are brought in. So that's reviewed annually.
Thank you. I just wanted to give you a preview of some of the questions.
Thank you. Thank you both so much. Thank you, Mr. Greeley. I appreciate you today. I believe unless there are any further questions on that item, we can return to Mr. James McHenry for item number eight, which Councilman, I'm sorry, Mayor Protim Middleton had pulled.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. President, can you hear me?
And if you would press star six on your telephone, Mr. McHenry, that may allow you to unmute.
Hello?
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry. I'm, 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 can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Mr. McHenry.
I'm James McHenry with Dixie.
Good afternoon, sir. Good afternoon, sir. Thank you. Mark Anthony Middleton here, Durham City Council. Just had a couple of questions about your item. I, I, you may, I don't know if you heard my initial on-ramp comments, but I recognize that you've been in relationship with us and others since about 1999. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. I, I was looking at some of the, your contract or workforce diversity questionnaire and some of the, the demographic information on, on your workforce. And 1999 is a significant amount of time to be in a relationship with us, and I, I noticed that you have, you have 265 employees in the entire company, correct?
Yes, I do. I, I do work all over, you know, several states.
How, how many of your employees are African-American in your universal workforce?
I, I couldn't answer that question without, you know, having to go back through. I've, since we're a seasonal business, we use a lot of H2B workers that we bring in from Mexico and South America, just because of being a seasonal business. You know, we, we can bring them in and, and, and we use a lot of those people. Where in the past, I guess we've used more, you know, people from the United States, but it's just been so difficult to hire anybody, you know, hire people that, you know, we rely on that program a little bit more. But we try to hire all the local people that we can, and we're actually, in the past, we worked with a subcontractor who's a minority there in Durham to do, you know, that we subcontract our litter work to.
So the number 265, is that number static or not? Do you have at this, as of today, how many employees does your company have?
We're very close to that number now because we're in the middle of the mowing season. You know, eight months out of the year, we've got a large number of people working for us, and then during the wintertime, our, you know, our workforce goes down to, you know, less than 50 people that are, you know, full-time people.
And so.
Who are very seasonally on in a business.
So, so it's kind of close to 265 today, and of that number, you, you have no sense as to how many black people work in your company?
No, sir, not. I mean, I, I mean, I don't want to tell you the number that's not correct. I mean, I, you know.
You got to ballpark as, of how many black employees you have?
Send it to you.
I'm sorry?
I said we could compile that information and try to get, you know, get it back to you.
On the, on your questionnaire, the, the, the information for the local employee, for the primary location, that would be Durham, is filled out. And by my read, there are eight, there are going to be about eight people doing the work in the field. They're all Hispanic. Is that according to this document? Does that sound familiar to you? 100% of the folk are Hispanic? That are going to be working in the Durham area?
Hispanic, and then, I mean, there's, there's Hispanic, and then we use, I mean, we've got a, a lady that we use, Cherie, and she does our litter, and she's some of the people.
So yes, so 100% of the folk that are going to be working in the primary area, which will be Durham, are Hispanic, correct?
Yes, I'm sorry. I, I don't have a real good connection here, and I keep breaking up, and I'm, and I apologize for that.
That's all right.
I just don't have very good internet connection where I am.
We'll get through it. We'll take the time you need. The, so on your workforce diversity questionnaire, part B, employee diversity breakdown for the consolidated company, is not filled out at all. Why not? And staff, if you want to chime in as well as to why this part of the questionnaire wasn't filled out, whoever the, the relevant staff person is, feel free as well. Mr. President, did you hear that question?
I can answer the question per the instructions on the contractor workforce and diversity, diversity questionnaire. It's a if-then statement. So if the staff that are being applied to the work of this contract are going to be pulled from the larger staffing resources of the company, then they need to fill out table B. But, so my understanding of the instructions basically necessitates the vendor to fill out section A if they intend to supply a specific workforce to work on this specific contract and not draw from their larger pool of personnel resources.
Absolutely, and I did see that. I, I've been looking at a lot of these things over the years, and I've never seen one not, usually folk, when they do have diversity throughout the company, they've usually seen that as an opportunity to kind of brag on it and kind of buttress their standing, whether they were pulling from it or not. So you're right, and I, I saw that parenthetically listed, but it would seem, you know, I, usually companies want to let us know about their overall company, particularly since they've alluded to their universal workforce. I mean, there's obviously not 265 people working in Durham. There's only eight. And since that total workforce number was part of what's being reported to us, you know, to, to me, that provided sufficient on-ramp to ask about the makeup of their, their total workforce. But, Mr. President, getting back to the questionnaire, there's a question that says, when you recruit for employees, do you only recruit by word of mouth? You said no. And do you focus any recruitment efforts in the local Durham area? You said internet ads, Facebook, and posters. Where, where is your company hung posters in Durham?
I'm, I'm not actually sure. You know, I, I guess I answered the question pretty much as far as what we do universally. I mean, maybe not there in.
Well, and hence my, well, hence my questions about the universal.
There's no, for the DOT, and we put out posters for that.
Well, the, you're, you're breaking up a little, the, it says, if yes, please provide examples how you focus recruit. Hello?
I, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I, I'm only hearing about maybe at best every other word, so I'm, I'm not able to answer these questions very well because I, I can't hear them.
Okay. If, do you have access to Zoom or perhaps another connection? Because we, this, this matters before us, and, and I, I think these are really important questions that we get some answer on, you know, pursuant to our approval of this contract. So do you need to find a more secure connection, Mr. President?
Actually, jobs are very, very limited cell phone connection.
I mean, we, we can, would you like to try and get on Zoom or, or have staff provide you, or do you want to soldier through right here? Can you hear me? Mr. President, can you hear me?
No, I, I cannot hear you. I heard, can you hear me? That's it.
Staff, can we do something maybe to kind of work with him to get a, a more secure connection? But I, I'd like these questions answered, and if, I don't want to take too much time. Wait, so if we can find a better connection for the president. Madam Mayor, I'll yield back.
I apologize for my connection, but there's.
Sorry?
Madam Clerk, do we have a better way of making sure that the president is able to fully answer Mayor Protim's questions?
Madam Mayor, a quick question. If Mayor Protim Middleton is, is, is open to it, could we have staff provide us the information via email? Or if the, if the gentleman is willing to send us an email with the information, since we're having such a hard time? Thank you.
I don't think the staff would be able to, to answer these questions for, on his behalf. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Excuse me a moment. I tried to call Mr. McHenry, and the call went to voicemail.
Madam Mayor, I, I'll, I'll yield back at this time, but I'm going to ask if this item be placed on GBA if, if we don't get him back today.
All right. We will do that. That will be item eight. We'll place that on GBA if he's not able to reconnect.
With an invitation for him to attend that meeting on that Monday.
All right, we will now move to item 12, I believe. Which is a proposed water and sewer rates for FY 2022 to 2023. That is, our research person is going to be Ms. Vicki Westbrook. This is a presentation. I wanted to look and make sure that we are ready to proceed with this one, or would you rather take a break? We do have to, we do need to be able to give our closed caption persons a break. break? We do have to, we do need to be able to give our closed caption persons a break after the two hour mark, I believe, which would be a little bit after this. So it's at your pleasure. Counsel, we ready to, we ready to proceed with this one and then we'll take a break? Okay. All right. Well, we will proceed.
All right.
We'll take a little short break after this one.
All right.
Is that okay? All right. We'll take a little break after this. I believe it's Ms. Westbrook was our research person.
Good afternoon again, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Members Council, Don Greeley, Department of Water Management. I'll be presenting today. I hope you can see the presentation in front of you. Um, I, I'd like to start out first briefly before I get started. Two quick comments. One, I'd like to thank you, Mayor O'Neal, and members of council for your ongoing encouragement and support of encouraging our residents in Durham to fill up their water bottles with our award-winning water rather than buy bottled water. Um, I've heard numerous comments from council members and yourself doing that. And I want to extend our appreciation from our department. And also, um, on behalf of the department, I'd like to thank City Manager Page and Deputy City Manager Johnson for their ongoing support of, to meet the needs of the city's water and sewer utility, especially around our increased operating costs, our capital improvement program, and the utility rates, which are in front of you for consideration today. With, in proposing the 2000, the rates for next fiscal year, um, the rates are based on a 10-year financial model. We work closely with our financial consultant, which is Raptelis Financial Consultants, as well as the finance department. It's a joint effort that reviews all the inputs to the financial model. Our goal is to try to smooth out any rate increases that might, um, so, and to minimize rig shot with all of our, um, our residents and customers. Um, a quick utility overview, you know, we, the Department of Water Management oversees our two reservoirs, our two water treatment plants, our two water reclamation facilities, as well as over 2,500 miles of water and sewer lines, numerous booster, um, stations as well as lift stations. We serve over 300,000 people and manage over 99,000 accounts. Is the screen advancing? It's advancing on my screen, but I don't know if it's advancing on your screen. There we go. There's a little delay. Next slide. The outline for today's presentation will be reviewing the rate objectives, strategies and key issues around the rates. We'll talk briefly about the capital improvement program and customer consumption, since these are important inputs into the rate models and getting the rates, as well as talk about the proposed rates themselves. In looking at our rate setting objectives, um, as in prior years, we have three objectives with setting rates. The first is affordability, um, to make sure our rates are fair and equitable to our customers, um, that our rates are sustainable in that we address all of the increased operating costs for the utility, as well as to fund the long-term capital needs of the utility. And we also want to encourage water efficiency and conservation. We want the rates to, we continue with our tiered rates approach to promote conservation and that the rates are cost-based, meaning that the residents have control of, of, you know, their consumption and how much water they consume and therefore how much water they're billed for. Um, when we talk about affordability, as I mentioned, we want to empower our customers to manage their costs. We want to minimize the impacts to customers in the lower tiers. And we want to implement programs to assist low and fixed income customers. Um, you know, especially, you know, when you think of, um, a lot of times we think of low and fixed income customers who are in the lower tiers, but that's not necessarily true because, um, large families or single-parent families with large children could be in tier three and tier four. So we really want to make sure that the, our, our, our rates are set to, to not impact or to impact them as low as possible. Um, in looking at historically, um, our rates, um, the graph that will come up shortly gives you an overview of where the rates have been over the last several years and where we're projecting to, um, bring the rates. And this is the, shows the average monthly bill that the different tiers receive. We'll note that over 95% of our single-family customers are in tiers one, two, three, and four. And, you know, and certainly, you know, tiers one and two represents almost 75% of our customer base. So once again, it's really important for us to, when we look at, build the financial model and look at any rate increases, we want to minimize the, the impacts and keep any rate increases small and to, which in turn keeps the overall bill that they're receiving monthly to be as low as possible. Another portion of making sure our rates are affordable comes around to, you know, dealing with our customers. You know, we are, at any given time, we are willing to make payment arrangements with our customers, um, either and to assist, um, to be able to spread their payments out over time if need be. Um, this allows the customers flexibility on the dates of when, um, they might be able to pay. Um, we've seen, um, a, a drop this year in payment arrangements, but certainly last year, we had a, a last fiscal year, we had a, a large number when we transitioned back from, um, not doing cutoffs to doing cutoffs. Um, currently we have, um, about five, 500 customers this year have come in and asked for payment arrangements. And they can be anywhere from moving a payment out a couple of weeks to spreading payments out over several months or even longer up to a year. So, um, kudos to our staff. Heidi Hackett, the utility finance manager, Crystal Harris and Kathy Compton, who are billing managers and their customer service managers who oversee our staff and working with our customers to make sure that, um, we can work out payment arrangement that that meets our individual customer needs. For those customers who are still struggling to be able to afford their utility bill, you know, the city has a hardship fund, which, um, customers who qualify can receive up to $240 annually to help pay their outstanding bills. Um, this offers kind of a clean site for customers to, for their bills going forward. We also work closely with two other programs for the larger bills. There was a partnership with Access H2O, which provides assistance for larger bills and frequently customers that are, that qualify under that program see most of their, their bill, um, assisted so they can get their, their water and sewer bills back in good standing with. So, um, that's been a tremendous program. The hardship fund itself, um, this year, $150,000 was allocated out of the general fund for the hardship fund. Um, year-to-date spending on that hardship fund is about $81,000, almost $82,000. We anticipate spending another $30,000 by the end of the year for a total of about $110,000. Um, we're spending less in the hardship fund. Um, that's been years past, and that's because of these other programs that we're working with, the Access H2O and the Low Income Household Water Assistance Program that's we partner, you know, which is, um, a state-funded program that's managed through the Durham County Department of Social Services. So we work through them to, um, help meet customer needs when it comes to paying their water and sewer bill. Overall, when it comes to customers, our billing continues to be, um, less than half. It was pre-COVID when it comes to cutoffs. A lot of that had to do with all of the outreach that our customer billing services staff did when we resumed, um, cutoffs after the hiatus, when, you know, COVID first started and suspended cutoffs. Um, and because of that, we were able to reach out and touch a lot of customers who were struggling in the past. So we've been able to maintain that much, you know, less than 50% cutoff rate, um, for the last year. And that continues to trend, stay relatively flat, which is very encouraging. And also because of all the hard work from the staff and all the outreach that we now do with our customers. And moving to the overall rate strategies, when it comes to, uh, managing the rates and setting the rates, our goal is to continue to have small annual rate increases to minimize the impacts to our customers, as I mentioned earlier, to cover all of our operating CIP and regulatory costs. Um, we need to continue to build infrastructure to access our Jordan Lake allocation and to meet future demand. As I mentioned, we try to smooth out our borrowing, um, as well as manage the debt to the benefit of the rate payers, not necessarily the bond ratings. And of course, the utility bond ratings are extremely high. The capital improvement program, uh, when we look over the next, um, five years, it totals almost, for appropriations, $766 million. This is for appropriations. The rate model is built on actual spending as opposed to appropriations, but appropriations are needed, an authorization to spend that money is needed to be able to, um, move forward with our projects. Um, you see 280 million, um, for water projects and 484 million dollars for sewer projects for, that is broken out on the next slide, um, into where that $766 million is allocated. 77 for our dams and reservoirs, 73 million for our water treatment plant, 205 million for the water reclamation facilities, 129 million for the water distribution system, 276 for the sewer collection system, and a little bit for facility paving. Um, a lot of the infrastructure for the distribution and collection system that we're rehabilitating and replacing is over 100 years old. And, um, most of our projects take anywhere from two to six years with the larger water resource type projects like the, um, getting access to Jordan Lake through our Western Intake Partnership project is, that's a, can take up to 10 to 12 years to, to construct. Please stop me at any time if you have any questions. Um, when we look at another key component into looking at the rates and the rate model is the usage and consumption. What you see here is the average daily demand, um, of our U system, which is, when you look at it, although it, it goes up and down, it seems relatively flat. And, you know, at first glance, this is surprising considering all the growth that we've had in Durham. But I think a lot of the, it's, there's a couple of different factors that play into that. Certainly, we've had a lot of redevelopment and the redevelopment in Durham. You take out very inefficient, uh, water fixtures and put in water efficient fixtures, and that actually lowers the consumption. Um, a lot of the industries have looked at their water practices, um, and have improved how they can potentially recycle or reduce their water consumption. Um, there's been a move away of some industry, water, um, high water consumption industries, um, have moved away and been replaced by other industries. So, overall, it's growing slowly, but it's still not, you know, surging up, which is, um, which is a good sign for us because we don't want to see a big spike in consumption. Um, but, um, in looking at the single-family residential by tiers, um, once again, this is the information that was shown, uh, on the affordability, when you look at the percent of customers. So majority of our customers are in those first four tiers and certainly the, over seven, almost 75% of our customers are in tier one and tier two. So it's, once again, really important to keep those, those costs in those tiers low. The proposed rates for FY 23, um, the proposed budget, uh, the overall budget for the utility is 120 million, slightly over $120 million. Um, 34% of that is personal services, 27 operations and maintenance expenses, 24% rate funded CIP and 15% debt service. If you look at overall projecting, the overall needs of the utility over the next several fiscal years, um, if we didn't adjust rates, you know, there would certainly be a shortfall in each of the next several years if we wanted to continue, if we did not increase our rates. And once again, I, I apologize for the, the lag in the, the slides from my speaking. The proposed rates for FY 23, um, there'll be a modest increase in the service and consumption charges. I'm going to let the slides catch up if you don't, if you just bear with me a minute. Once again, I apologize for the technology delay. There we go. Um, there'll be a modest increase to the service and consumption charges to all the tiers. We'll continue to have the penny per tier increase, um, for the watershed protection. You know, based on usage, customers will see different percent increases to their actual bills, um, based on their consumption and where they fall within the tiers. Um, all single-family customers, um, you know, use water, the usage moves into the higher tiers and they're billed at the higher rates. So, um, once again, the, it's, it's, um, building blocks. If a customer moves out of, is typically in tier two and then moves into tier three, um, you know, the first part of the bill is billed at tier one, the second part is billed at tier two, and then the next part is billed at tier three. So, whereas, um, we build the commercial multifamily resident, uh, multifamily residential, industrial institutional customers at the tier three rate. So all of their water is billed at the tier three rate and irrigation accounts are billed at the tier five rate. We're continuing to propose the, um, double rates outside the, uh, city limits. Um, those customers that are served by the Durham County wastewater plant will see slightly different sewer charges based on the county's adoption of their, their rates for their sewer treatment. The overall proposed increases will cover the department's operating costs for FY 23, any pay-per-performance that's enacted, uh, with our staff. Pay-as-you-go, capital improvement program funding, all of the debt service, um, as well as the utility fleet replacement fund for replacing any of the utility, utilities, vehicles. Um, and that's managed by the fleet, uh, fleet maintenance department. Um, and then the general tran, transfer that for services provided by the general fund, um, that they're billed, the utility fund is billed for. Um, the proposed rates maintain the necessary debt covenants and maintains the minimum of 180 days operating and maintenance costs for reserves. The, the next slide shows the overall increases, um, both for the service charges and the individual, uh, tiered rates. So a 42 cent increase on the service charge for water, a 41 cent increase for the service charge for sewer, um, and then small incremental rates for the, the different tiers. There we go. There we go. The next slide shows graphically shows the increase to each of the tiers, like a tier one will see a dollar. The average tier one customer uses about 108 cubic feet of water monthly. So their bill will go up a dollar and five, five cents. The the next slide shows a price comparison of what that actually represents when you actually look at the cost of the increase that is roughly the equivalent of one 20 ounce bottle of water or two thirds of a cup of coffee at Starbucks. And as or, you know, for tier tier five, that represents seven original glazed delusions from Krispy Kreme. Once again, we use this slide to show how customers could easily save money by, you know, using filling up their water bottles with city Durham water. Because as you can see, one gallon of our tap water only costs point oh oh for eight cents per gallon or dollars per gallon. We think that's a great deal. And next we show the comparison for the monthly commercial inside rates. So a five agents meter commercial account will see a $6.59 increase on their bill. So for the proposed rates for the next five years, it is shown on the next two slides is 3.9%, and that's for the typical tier three customer. It includes a 4.1% increase for water and a 3.8% increase in sewer. Certainly, the future increases are needed to support the infrastructure renewal programs and the CIP and any other growth related projects. And certainly, you're starting to see the impacts from Jordan Lake. Also, what's impacting the rates is the the fact that over the last several years, we've been spending down our operating reserves to keep the rates lower. And we've gotten to the point now where we spent down the operating reserves to close to the 180 days that's that we need to to keep in the reserves. And and also we're seeing a significant increase in operating costs, especially around chemicals and electricity have jumped drastically this year, and we anticipate that that to carry over into next year. We are, although, you know, we've been very fortunate to be in the the 2%, 3% our last several years. But as I said, with with all of those factors entering in, we're seeing the rates creep up. Durham itself is still very fortunate, both originally in North Carolina and in southeast to have still relatively low increases. One of the larger, one of the check-ins that we do every year is with the UNC Environmental Finance Center and comparing ourselves to the other large utilities in North Carolina. This is a screenshot of the dashboard from the UNC Environmental Finance Center. Looking at a typical bill of consuming 5,000 gallons per month and looking at those larger utilities in North Carolina. And you can see by the dials to the right that the we fare very well in the bill comparison compared to the other neighboring utilities. Our conservation signal with our tier rates is is reasonably strong. We have a good cost recovery. And then median affordability, which is probably the most important dial on this graph is, which is looking at the annual modern sewer bills as it compares to the medium household income. And according to the UNC Environmental Finance Center, you should shoot for having making utilities should shoot for having that be less than 2% of the median household income. And that shows that we are, we're about 1.4%. However, we also realize that, you know, in Durham with all the development and certainly the gentrification that the medium household income is is going up. So you just can't.
Mr. Greeley, could you speak up just a little more, please?
Sure. In and of itself, you know, looking at that that measure, you you can't do that because the medium household income in Durham is rising. And that doesn't necessarily reflect some of the challenges of our tier one and tier two customers. So, but once again, it's still a strong signal at 1.37%. Comparing a 4,000 gallon per month customer against our larger utilities and what's being proposed by the other utilities across the state, we show we're fair, we fare very well. We don't know the increase in Greensboro, so that's why the Greensboro is not shown on that graph. We are not proposing any changes or increases to the our capital facility fees for FY '23. And with that, I will open it up for questions. First off, I'd just like to thank some of the staff that has and all the hard work that goes into both this presentation, but also working on the rate model. And that's certainly Vicki Westbrook, one of my assistant directors, Heidi Hackett, and her team, the utility finance manager, Jared Maron, the engineering manager, who spends a lot of time looking at our spending schedules for all of our projects. And also, I want to thank the finance department, Tim For and his team to help support the rate model and the utilities functions. So with that, I thank you and I'll open up for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Greeley, for your time today and the hard work of your staff. I turn it over to any questions my colleagues may have.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Greeley. Don, good to see you again. Firstly, I I can't speak for the rest of the council, but I would appreciate it in the future. If you're not actually going to bring doughnuts, not to use them in your graphics. You're messing with my concentration. But moving forward, let me say, I always appreciate this presentation from from the water department and look forward to it. One, because it gives us an opportunity to brag on just how great Durham's water is, how clean it is, how good it tastes. It's award winning, literally, award winning. And we appreciate the incredible work. One of the most impressive behind the scenes things I've gotten to see since being on the council is visiting our wastewater treatment plants and just the incredible amount of technology and that goes into it. And and the vigilance and diligence and the science, it's it's just incredibly impressive what it takes to keep our water safe and to keep it tasting so good and smelling so good. So I want to just give kudos to you and the entire shop who's up, you know, around the clock when we're sleeping, monitoring our water supplies and making sure that when we get up in the morning and turn that tap on, it flows. I also want to want to just celebrate, you know, our continued commitment to delivering high quality water with really, really small incremental increases in our rates as much as possible. And I want to thank you and the shop for honoring that value of ours and our commitment. You know, the planet's mostly water, so the notion of charging people for it is, you know, we understand it's things we got to do to clean it and make it safe. But but I I appreciate our commitment as a city to making it as affordable as possible. And in that in that vein, and you already alluded to the hardship fund, the the fund. And you you said something about it not being exhausted, perhaps because of the other opportunities for folk to take advantage of of getting assistance. Is is the current level of $150,000 in your assessment enough for our needs based upon what you've seen and and trends? Or do we need to look at muscularizing that some more moving forward?
Yeah, that's something we followed closely this year, especially since, you know, we had come to council last year to get increases in the fund because we were using that money up fairly quickly. And I really appreciate city council's commitment in increasing the amount of funding in that fund. I think at that time when we increased it, there wasn't as the the support programs that we see now weren't all the way in place. And because of these other programs being in place right now, we think $150,000, if it's carried forward into next fiscal year, will be enough. But once again, we'll be monitoring that closely and coming back to you if we think we will be depleting any funds before the year is out. But, you know, as I said, we're projecting to only spend about 110,000 of 150 cutoffs are less than, you know, 50% of what they were pre-COVID. Now we have these other programs in place. So we really think that where we are now with 150 should put us in a good place for next year. But we certainly will be monitoring that closely. And we'll bring that to certainly manager page's attention should we see an uptick in that fund.
Thank you so much. That's encouraging. And I know that that's gratifying for for all of my colleagues and out of here that you'll keep vigilant with that. I didn't want to ask a question about the, and and I get this question from residents and citizens often about the kind of what what undergirds the consistent rate increases each year. And is it is it tied just to the incredible expense of of capital and the equipment we need? Or is it, or is there some component that's also tied to projections on population growth? And let me give you, let me tell you why I say this. There's some years we don't raise taxes, but we still see increased revenues because the tax base has grown. And our rate increase for water is it seems to be consistent, notwithstanding how many people are paying for water. So is it, is it more tied to the capital needs, the actual equipment needs of providing safe water for our city? Or is it, is there ever a year we can not raise it because we've got more people? Or is, you know, paying for the water like we have with tax rates sometimes?
Right. You know, it's a good question. I'd love to be able to say yes. But from from where we're projecting, not anytime soon. And that's based on a couple of things. Certainly, a lot of our infrastructure, our linear infrastructure, our water lines and our sewer lines, as I mentioned, are over 100 years or approaching 100 years old, and those lines need to be replaced. Most of those lines are under pavement. So replacing those lines are very expensive. You know, we currently have completed all the line replacement within the Durham downtown area and Durham Central Park. We're completing the kind of the initial phase of the American Tobacco project, project, which is replacing the water lines kind of west of Blackwell. We are in the permitting to start construction on the lines east of Blackwell. We have a large project replacing in East Durham and just kicked off a project in West Durham and all of the East and West Durham's are areas adjacent to downtown. And all of those projects, you know, you're talking are in the neighborhoods of anywhere to 30 and 40 million dollars for each one. And then as we look at meeting our new regulatory requirements, replacing some of the aging infrastructure that we see, that, you know, we're doing a full kind of facelift on Lake Mickey Dam. That's, you know, over 100 years old, we're completely replacing all of the pumping, electrical, mechanical equipment within the dam because they've outlived their useful life. So there's all of these ongoing, as we continue to move around the city and replace that old infrastructure. Unfortunately, those costs continue to go. And then certainly adding new water supplies to meet our overall long term needs as a community for increased water as as we see our community grow and develop. You know, it's important to bring the our allocation from Jordan Lake online, which we hope to do in the year 2031 to 2032. And that's a, you know, that's, that's a $500 million project. And we're working closely with our Western Intake Partners, Pittsboro and Chatham County and Owassa to share those costs, but still, that's a very expensive project. So when you layer all of that on top of increased operating costs as well, it's it's hard to see that we won't have increases. But once again, we're trying to smooth those increases out and keep them relatively small and still meet all of those needs.
Yeah, thanks for that. And that that's an excellent primer. And I'm glad that, you know, folk watching have an opportunity to hear that. Just when we turn that tap on, the incredible amount of investment and work that goes into getting that water to us. I I know kids run up to firefighters and police officers often, but I wish they run up to water workers as well. You know, recognizing how much you do to serve our city and the heroic efforts y'all do to keep our water clean and safe and drinkable. Thanks much. I look forward to considering the rates in our upcoming budget deliberations. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I yield back.
Are there any further questions for Mr. Greeley? All right. Thank you so much. I think at this time, we're going to take about a 10 minute break. And then we will come back and resume with item 18.
I was looking for an opportunity and an old friend of mine suggested that I apply at Go Durham. The community really relies on us, on Go Durham public transportation.
Well, I like driving a bus because of the friendly culture. I love it in the morning when people greet me, good morning. They give me a friendly wave. They appreciate you. And that goes a long way being a bus driver in Go Durham.
Anything can be achieved here. You can come in at the bottom and you will be able to excel in a fairly assured amount of time. Here, I started as an operator and I'm here now as an operator training specialist. So as long as you stick to it, you can excel.
The perfect candidate that would excel at Go Durham is someone with tenacity, someone would drive, someone who wants to make a difference for their community.
You have to be people oriented. You have to be experienced. And you have to be on hands, ready to go, but with the proper training, it's just like driving a car.
So as a new driver with road training, come in and you see me and I'm going to make sure you have all the tools to succeed.
They give you a lot of input and they work with you step by step. So you won't be alone in this.
To anyone considering working for Go Durham, you won't regret it. Please come, please apply. We would love to have you join the Go Durham team.
We, the people.
Nosotros de gente.
Women renmin.
Mía dumavio.
Hum sablog.
We, the people, hold these truths.
To be self evident that all men
and women
are created equal
and shall be afforded
the inalienable right
to fair housing.
The city of Durham and HUD are committed to ensuring that everyone is treated equitably when searching for a place to call home.
There's no place like home. Home is where the heart is.
Hey, can I help you?
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much.
It is our place of safety and warmth. Home is where love resides, memories are created, and laughter warms the heart. That's why the Durham Human Relations Division is committed to enforcing the Fair Housing Act, which prohibits unlawful discrimination based on race, color, disability, religion, sex, familial status, or national origin.
All right, y'all. We ready to start back? Okay, we're now ready. It is now 3:36 and we are now back in session. But we will, we will continue on with our...
Excuse me, Ms. Johnson.
Ms. Page.
Staff?
Staff.
We're ready to get back.
It's time. It is now time. Alrighty, we will now turn our attention to pulled item 18, Street and Infrastructure Acceptances. Our resource person is Mr. Joyner. And I believe that that was pulled by Councilwoman Freeman.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Just, I'm just trying to make sure I'm following where these items or the selection of these streets are being pulled in from. So I wasn't sure if it was identified through a CIP process or if there were different process that went, that the staff was going, I don't know who I'm talking to, whose staff was going through to identify the locations.
This is Robert Joyner from the Public Works Engineering Division. All of these projects are in development currently. And so what these are is these have passed through all the stages of development where they've been evaluated, the inspections have been completed, all the punch list items have been completed, and functionally, all of the houses in that area have been built.
And so just for...
At the end of that, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry. Just for future reference, is there some place I can look to see what roads are coming online? Just acknowledging like this is a large number right now, like...
Yes, and we will have many more coming due to the nature.
That is what my concern is. And so just acknowledging, I know we're annexing in the county and there are other developments all coming online at the same time. How much of this is going to kind of raise our CIP cost? Like trying to have an evaluation in my mind or a resource to kind of look to. It would just be helpful to just know. Because I know through our planning and zoning process, there are streets that are coming online. But I don't know how to see, I guess, a list of them?
Only through this process here for council acceptance. As the streets are completed, they're completed on developers' timetables. There's no specific timetable that can be looked at or that information's not available. It's as the development completes each phase of their project on their timelines.
And I guess the kind of wraparound that is, is when we're discussing, I guess, some of our stormwater issues or stormwater concerns, how much, and I guess because there's no timeline or no timetable, or it's only on the developer's timetable, how do, how do we kind of plan to address some of the ongoing flooding issues that I'm noticing? I think I shared a video with some staff regarding one area of our community. I'm just trying to get my head around what we might be able to do to try and be proactive in addressing some of the kind of runoff issues that have been arising with heavy rains.
So I'd have to defer to the Stormwater Division of the Public Works Department to answer some of those questions. But I would note that as a function of development review, a lot of your flooding concerns and things of that nature are looked at as a part of the development review. So you'll see mitigation measures that will start from both the water quality aspect. They will also look through the flooding aspects. And in Durham, you would detain up, you could detain up to the 10-year, which is standard. But in some cases, you could detain up to the 100-year storm. Particularly if you're adjacent to existing development that could have improper infrastructure downstream of your new development.
And I just, just to, and I'm assuming this question is for stormwater. I don't know if we're at the point where we've already made the 100-year stormwater requirement, a requirement actually?
It's a requirement not for all, for not all projects. It's looked at on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, thank you. I will follow up and try to get a briefing around it. Thank you.
Yeah. And just one other item. If you were looking for a measurement standard, when you approve a zoning, typically, when you go through all of the process, the earliest you could expect those streets to come online probably would be five years afterwards. That'd be a good measuring timeline.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I believe we now return to our last pulled item, which is a presentation from Stormwater Fund and Rates, number 22, FY 2023 Stormwater Rates. And Mr. Paul Whipkey is our resource person.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor O'Neill and Mr. Mayor Protem Middleton. I'm Paul Whipkey with the Department of Public Works. And I'll share my presentation with you. I'm presenting the Stormwater Fund and the proposed Stormwater Rates for FY 2023. The Stormwater Fund is an enterprise fund that does have stormwater fees as its primary source of revenue. Our FY 2023 annual operating budget is approximately $11.7 million, supporting 104 FTEs, our full-time employees. This fund's stormwater management, stormwater maintenance, and our street cleaning functions, as well as our capital projects address stormwater infrastructure improvements on, within the right-of-way on city-owned property and some on private property. We also address watershed planning efforts to identify projects, to perform stormwater retrofit designs and constructions to meet our requirements and obligations with our state rules primarily, Falls Lake and upcoming Jordan Lake rules that were going to be readopted. And we also comply with our Upper New River Basin interim alternative implementation approach, which is just an alternative to what is Falls Lake Stage One rules were. We'll also begin to address our total maximum daily load. That's what TMVL stands for, our response plans for improving and getting the pollution control under control for our Third Fork Creek and Northeast Creek watersheds. I'll explain a little bit more about that later. They are impaired for turbidity or sediment and bacteria. We also have floodplain mitigation projects, which we perform through our FEMA partners, through hazard mitigation grant projects. Most of that is grant funding from the federal government and some through our state partners. And our activities are requirements of our National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. We have a permit that's reissued every five years that we comply with. We're actually responding to an audit right now from the state on that. And basically, the permit is for developing programs and implementing them that make our waters fishable and swimable again because there are impairments. Our key issues for the program, we are seeking a rate increase for the upcoming fiscal year, our ongoing operations. Rate increases are proposed through FY 25, supporting our capital spending needs and the aforementioned projects needed to comply with our state rules, Falls Lake, Jordan Lake, and our new rules and our actual load reduction plans for bacteria and sediment. We have a bacteria issue in Northeast Creek and sediment is identified in Third Fork Creek. And we've got programs in place and ongoing to address those issues. We have had rate increases in the past, and I'll get into that a little bit more in a future slide. Our capital projects, as you'll see, will peak in FY 23. We do have much aging infrastructure, much as you heard in the water and sewer water management presentation. Stormwater infrastructure is quite old within our right-of-way and city-owned property. As I said before, our Jordan Lake rules and Falls Lake rules are going to be rewritten. And that process is beginning shortly. There have been meetings with Jordan Lake Water and the Jordan Lake rules and Falls Lake rules. The Falls Lake rules readoption process begins a little later in January of 2024. And we're continuing our relationship with the Upper New River Basin Association. We appreciate council's support for that effort. This next slide shows our proposed rates for FY 22 through FY 29. Of note on this slide particularly is our end balance here. The second line is our end balance at the end of the fiscal year with after operating reserve. And operating reserve is important in that you are able to secure debt funding, go out for debt should you have a sufficient operating reserve. So the goal with the rate model is to ensure that stays stable. And you'll see that FY 20 and 2022, the figure is $24.4 million, but it's rather solid. But through some capital funding expenditures, rather I should say, the figure drops to 8.9 million in 2023 and continues to drop somewhat through 2026, but does not go negative or go to zero. So we're in good shape there. Our next slide, I'll show you more about our, more information on our CIP spend, particularly in FY 23. Reason for that large drop was we have a projected spend in FY 23 of $21.5 million, which is quite a lot. And nearly half of that is due to, or over half of that is due to our South Hillbilly Stormwater Restaurant.
Excuse me, Mr. Whipkey. It's a bit difficult to hear you sometimes. I don't know if you can adjust your microphone or maybe speak up. It's really important stuff you're going through, so.
Certainly. Let me find that and bump that microphone up. I'm sorry that you can't hear me.
No worries. Just from time to time, you trail off a little bit.
Sorry about that. I'll try not to trail off. The CIP spending in FY 23... The, uh, the CIP spending in FY 23 is $21.5 million total, and the majority of that is in our South Ellerby Creek project, South Ellerby Stormwater Restoration Project, I should say. Uh, we have a number of our stand, but standard items in the, uh, CIP, uh, major stormwater infrastructure is, is, uh, is, uh, stormwater infrastructure in the right-of-way. Uh, we have a private property program, we fund it at about a half a million dollars per year. Watershed planning fluctuates from year to year, depends on when the watershed plan starts. We have a new one starting sometime in FY 23, probably the latter part of it for Lick and Briar Creeks. And we have drainage repair of city-owned property, that's parks, trails, cemeteries, um, basically properties the city owns that's not in the right-of-way. Uh, floodplain mitigation, um, we have a small amount there just due to the fact that most of the funding we have in that program is grant funding. Stormwater retrofitting is just that, it's smaller-scale retrofits. And we also have an Alba Flowway or Alba Turf Scrubber project we're, we're working on, and, uh, uh, that's a very promising project, and we've got work to do on that. Emergency watershed protection, that's another grant project, uh, where we get funding from the North Carolina Department of Agriculture, as well as the U.S. Department of Agriculture for Streambank Stabilization. And we're also, through the CIP, funding part of the, uh, renovation at the Public Works Operations Center from FY 23 through FY 27 at just over a million dollars per year. And the last line here, you see under the different projects, is our stormwater fleet funding, which is funded there. Uh, the bottom line, we're not, the bottom line is the, you project, project totals, but they're inflated, they're, there's an ad for inflation on the out-years. So that's why you'll see a little difference between the, the next-to-last line and the last line. Uh, our, as I said before, our CIP funding in FY 23 does peak, and we could not sustain $21.5 million for each year, so it does drop off to 12 million in 2024 and 10 in 2025. And then fluctuates between 12 and 13 million dollars in some years, and then the out-years, it's, it's a little considerably less, but, uh, the projects are less well-defined on that far out. This slide shows our customer bill impact for the upcoming year that we're proposing. Residential Tier One customers are customers that have residential property, single-family home, um, on, uh, property that has less than 2,000 square feet of impervious cover. The rate would go from 3.75 per month to 4.20, an increase monthly of 45 cents or $5.40 per year. Tier Two residential properties have impervious cover of 2,000 square feet to less than 4,000 square feet of impervious cover, with the rate going from 7.76 per month to 8.70 per month, or an increase of 94 cents per month, or $11.28, $11.28 annually. Tier Three residential customers have over 4,000, have 4,000 or more square feet of impervious cover on their property, and their monthly rate would be going from 15.55 per month to 17.42 per month, or $1.87 per month. Increase, or annually, at 22.44 cents per month, or annually, I'm sorry, let me say that. Uh, our non-residential rates or commercial rates are increasing by 94 cents, or 2,400 square feet of impervious cover. Commercial properties are billed according to how many portions of 2,400 square feet they have. It would be multiples of that if, uh, FY 23, if the rate were to pass, uh, if somebody had 4,800 square feet of impervious cover, their monthly bill would be $17.40. The next slide, I'll show you the, our estimated accounts and revenue by tier. We have approximately 6,500 commercial accounts and 77,000 residential accounts. Uh, those you can see on the left are broken out by tier. Uh, Tier Two is by far the largest number of customers we have on a residential basis at 38,500. Uh, note, though, is on the right, revenue by tier and by, by category. Our non-residential or commercial rate payers pay 67% or approximately $15 million of the $22.4 million estimated revenue for FY 23. Residential customers basically pick up about a third of the revenue for the utility through the different tiers that you see on the right-hand side. Our stormwater rates as compared to our communities in the area. Uh, our Tier One rates compare very favorably, uh, lower, on the lower end of the scale here. Our Tier Two monthly rates, uh, are a little bit higher than the middle, we're close to the middle but not quite, and our commercial rates are similarly on the higher end of the middle of our rates, uh, as, as a comparison. Our rate history from 2010, um, we had rate increases from 2011 through 2015 and then remained steady from 2015 through 2020 and 2021. We began a series of rate increases. That's somewhat typical of the utility here, at least for stormwater anyway. We go through a series of rate increases, and we're projecting rate increases through 2025, and should remain steady once we reach that point. The next slide is, um, how we're planning to meet our AIAI, our Falls Lake Stage One requirements. We're looking at the South Ellerby Wetland to provide us about 21% of our reduction needed there. Our existing projects that we have contribute about 12% of the years that we've accumulated stormwater, additional stormwater retrofits will provide about 13%. Green infrastructure is still a rather small part of what we do. Infiltrating water in Durham is rather difficult because, um, the soils in Durham are clay, and infiltrating water through that material is extremely difficult. Our innovative technologies for nutrient removal are, are quite good and have, the testing has borne out well, and we, we're going to get significant reductions from that practice. To give you a little update on our, some of the larger projects, the South Ellerby Stormwater Restoration, uh, we've begun the soil removal portion of the project, and that should be concluded at some point this summer. And then construction of the final wetland will be late fall, um, possibly early winter of 2022. We also have an Alba Flowway or Alba Turf Scrubber that we've, uh, we're still, uh, working on the sites for that. We believe we can find a, a site for a full-scale plant, and we're finalizing a communications plan to get word out on that at some point. And I'm available, and I'm here for any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Madam Mayor, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, uh, Ms. Whipke, for, uh, this really important, uh, presentation. Just under algae turf scrubber, site suitable for 10, 10 MGD plant identified, what's MGD stand for?
Million gallons per day.
Gotcha, alright.
And, and, and that's, that's something where you'd just be, the water would pump out and would be, pulses across a, a flowway that algae would grow on and, and it's returned to the water body, um, probably within about 10 or 15 minutes.
How, how large a footprint are we talking about for a site for something like this?
Um, the actual flowway is 500 feet long by, oh, probably about 500 feet wide for something that's 10 million gallons per day, but you, you'd need 15 or 20 acres minimum to, huh, to, um, work all the grading out. It kind of depends on how flat it is.
Right. Okay.
And how the existing property lines intersect with that.
Been on the council for a minute, there's never a year that goes by where I do not learn something new about this, uh, this whole process of, of stormwater and, and our water in general. Appreciate the presentation. Thank you, Madam Mayor. You go back.
Alright, thank you, sir, for your presentation today. It's always a learning curve. I can't wait to visit you all to actually see some of the things that you all are doing, and I have some, a couple of visits planned. Are there any questions regarding this, okay? Councilwoman Freeman.
Um, just, just in, in light of, um, the presentation, I just wanted to just ask the question if, if there was a, uh, any update on where we are with Duke Diet and Fitness Center? I know that that was a large project that has been moving forward, and I didn't see a timeline, did you see?
The, the project is, uh, in Phase Two. They're removing soil from the site, they're doing the grading, um, the, the preliminary grading, the, um, constructed, the actual wetland construction will begin, will go to bid, uh, late fall of, of this year, possibly early winter, sometime, probably November, maybe possibly December. We're working out some final details on the plans right now.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCleary, are you ready?
Quickly, thank, thank you, Mayor. Um, good afternoon. Just wanted to say it's been exciting to see the, the progress at the South Ellerby Stormwater Restoration. They are doing a lot of digging there. Um, you know, I've lived near there and having seen not a lot happening, and then all of a sudden, all the soil removal, and so, uh, just wanted to highlight that, and, um, thank you for the great presentation.
Thanks, everybody. I think now we are moving to, um, Boards and Commissions and our Task Force nomination process. Mad, uh, Madam Clerk?
Good afternoon, everyone. I wanted to start with the Durham Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Commission nominations for the category of youth representative between the ages of 15 and 24. There was no confirmed vote on that, so I wanted to ask if, um, anyone wanted to change their vote.
There, is there anyone who has three, like, what is the breakdown, I guess?
James Barnes received three votes, Isabella Miller two, and Camille Sherman one.
I think I was Isabella Miller, so that's fine.
Okay, to James Barnes.
Yep.
Alright, thank you. And in the same board, for the walking, biking, pedestrian community for marginalized groups, the council nomination is Caesar Castro. Moving on to the Durham Historic Preservation Committee for the category of real estate, agenda, developer and builder is Rakim Yu-Chambers. And then finally, the Mayor's Hispanic Latino Committee reappointment is Italo Medalius. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you for that. I believe now we are at the matter of settling our agenda.
Thank you, um, Madam Mayor. Uh, before I start reading, um, where, where items will show, I would, uh, the administration is requesting that item number eight be returned to the administration for, uh, an additional cycle, um, the technology issues that we had here, um, as well as some additional, uh, questions that I like to have asked. I have, have verified with the staff that, uh, an additional cycle would not impact the service itself, so I am requesting that, uh, and you will note that in my request for settling the agenda. So for consent, I have, uh, items one through three, item five, and items nine through 19, GBA, item 20, and GBA public hearings, items 21 and 22.
Thank you, Madam City Manager. Is there a motion and a second to settle the agenda?
I'll move.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Freeman and seconded by Councilwoman Williams, that we settle our agenda on the set items. All those with, sign by saying aye.
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 All those opposed will have the same right. Hearing none, our, that motion passes unanimously. Now we will return to our city attorney's request for a closed session this afternoon, and we are ready to entertain a motion to hold a closed session.
Madam Mayor, I move that we, uh, have a closed session.
There a second?
Second.
I think we need the language authorizing the-
Yeah, I need to, I need to get the specific language-
No, that's right, you do.
Because there are different types of closed sessions. Uh, this particular one is to hold a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318.11a3, for attorney-client consultation concerning the handling or settlement in the cases listed below, Daryl Howard versus City of Durham, 117, CV 477, Middle District of North Carolina.
Thank you, Madam Attorney.
You're welcome.
My apologies.
Move this red.
Move this red, second.
Alright, it has been a motion by, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Middleton and seconded by Councilman Williams. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor, would you sign by saying, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed will have the same right. Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously, and we will now, uh, go into closed session. Don't we go out?
Madam Mayor, I'm working on locking down the meeting.
Thank you. Okay. I was like, I can't do it anymore.
Madam Clerk, the city council's going to recess to their conference room for the closed session, and then we'll return. Okay.
Thank you.